All right, I'll go ahead and call this work session to order. Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Councilor Pitzel.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Present.
Councilor Hockinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
One of those, I'm here. We'll do a quick review of our city council meeting for tonight. And will there be any calls for changes to the agenda? All right, we'll then go to our public comments. We did have one submitted online for public comment tonight on the subject matter of climate change. Have we gotten anything else yet, Jeff?
Nothing else, Mayor.
All right, great. And then we will go to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our November first meeting. Is there any questions for staff before we move on? All right, under old business, we will be selecting the date for planning commission interviews. I'm pretty sure the mayor's the reason for that one. And we'll then go to three sixty second Bell Street Extension Project update. And I'm pretty sure that update is going to help lead to our new business conversation on the same project for the Declaration of Public Necessity. With some, some updates that happened out there. Then we'll go to our report from our city manager and our committee in council reports and we'll adjourn our meeting for this evening. With that, let's go ahead and get our work session for this evening going. We have a update from our homeless task force. Thank you to Counselor Sheldon and Smallwood for your participation on that. Jeff, do you want to, Jeff or Jordan, do you want to get us started?
Yeah, I'll get us started. I do have slides. I know work sessions, we want to have more of a conversation and discussion. And that's the purpose of tonight, really. And I thought some slides would help kind of help facilitate the conversation and you know, kind of outline the purpose of tonight and what we're really here to talk about. And get your direction and feedback on, as the counselors, Smallwood and Sheldon have been meeting with staff and meeting with other groups too, to kind of talk about this two-pronged approach that we've pursued with the homelessness issue, looking at our codes and ordinances and regulations and how we provide current services and then also looking more upstream in terms of what more we could be doing and how we partner with other organizations, the county and nonprofit groups to, to help address this issue. A lot of our time over the last few months has been talking about our current camping code and regulations and then how we update that code to be compliant with the new case laws and of course, the state law recently passed. And making sure that our new code would be constitutional, but also help address the issue of, you know, camping within the city of Sandy, protecting, you know, the safety and health of those that are, you know, experiencing homelessness, but also the, you know, community livability and the folks within the city that, that have concerns about, you know, sort of the issues surrounding unregulated campsites. A couple of the things that we've been talking about. Yeah, a couple of the things that we've been talking about too is in meeting with other organizations like the city of Gresham, we've learned about what they do and their outreach programs, but also some of these other regulations that they have. And so we wanted to introduce this idea of an RV parking permit. That seems like another tool that can help us kind of manage what a lot of cities are starting to experience is camping and overnight staying in recreational vehicles and campers that, that stay parked on city roads and some of the issues surrounding that. And then the idea that the task force has talked about, and I think the mayor has brought up too, is, is holding a community forum, a panel, listening session. And whatever the council determines that looks like, that kind of meeting with other community groups and organizations that kind of come and talk and hear and learn what we're working on and how we can all partner and coordinate on this, you know, sticky issue. And so the, kind of the first thing that we wanted to talk about with the councils is just talking about our proposal for some draft code language around camping in the city of Sandy. And I wanted to thank also Emily Metasar is here tonight. She's been helpful in working with the task force members in reviewing these proposed draft language or existing code, giving us some samples from other cities and kind of how they've worked around it. And so she's here tonight to kind of help with the legal questions. And then the chief's here tonight and I think General Landry too, if you had any questions about.
Do you mind if I just throw in a quick question?
Of course.
So right, and this was prior to me being mayor, I was just sitting out there. And it was shortly after the Boise decision had come down and council at that time had to do some, basically my understanding was some house cleaning on the ordinance to be able to comply with that decision. That went forward, but in my reading in preparation for this meeting, you know, we're not in compliance. I'm sure there's been case law stuff that's happened in the last two years. But I was just curious what we did at the time and, and obviously why, why isn't that sufficient at this point?
Same, I have the same question, so thank you.
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
Well, you were actually.
Yeah, I was frustrated then as well.
Yeah. It's a great question. I don't have the exact answer. Chief or Emily might recall that. I just know that not long after that, it became outdated again.
Okay.
Now, with either the case laws or especially with House Bill thirty-one fifteen. Our current code currently bans camping citywide on any public property, which is not constitutional without enough shelter space and, you know, a safe place for people to sleep overnight and things like that. So that's kind of the intent of what we're first trying to tackle here and what we're sort of proposing as our first shot at what new code language would look like. So the task forces, you know, kind of talked about what our values were, you know, in terms of what we're trying to protect and also what's easiest, you know, and to help facilitate people being able to have a safe place to, to sleep at night, but also addressing kind of the community livability issues and, and, you know, human dignity and things like that. And so what they've developed is driven in camping on any, basically any city, city property that are parks, trails, open spaces, overlays like, you know, natural areas and flood, slow hazard areas. You know, downtown was, was identified as an area that we would prohibit camping between Bluff and Tennyson on Procter and Pioneer. As I understand it, state highways already prohibited camping along state highways, which highway twenty-six is, so camping would not be permitted there anyways. Enforcement of that is another issue, but.
So what were the times that we would not allow it?
Time wise, camping would not be allowed between six thirty AM and nine thirty PM, I believe. So where it is permitted, you could camp between nine thirty and six thirty in the morning.
Yeah, you can't stop them from staying the night.
So we stop, okay, all right.
Yeah. So this list also includes like basically any city-owned facilities, parking lots and things like that, and any areas zone for residential use. And so that narrows it down to basically commercial and industrial zoned areas of town that does not include downtown. You know, we look at a map of the city. If you look at, on this map, the purple and red are commercial and we'll keep working on this map for you to kind of pin this down, but the purple areas is essentially, if you don't, so if you can't camp on highway twenty-six and downtown in the couplet. So it's essentially the purple areas, Champion Way, Industrial Way, you know, down here. And, and then a few of the blocks, unless we want to extend it further in the couplet that are not highway twenty-six, Procter, Pioneer, Pleasant. So it's essentially the stretch of land here, the, the public right of way in the industrial areas that would be permitted under this draft language. Now, this is the kind of the first shot that the task force has been working on to kind of get your feedback on. The big test here is, are, are these regulations, these time, place and manner restrictions objectively reasonable? And what that means and how you define that will be played out in courts, probably across Oregon as these things develop and other cities are developing their, their regulations around camping. There's of course other options to consider, designating certain areas of town, developing more shelter space and things like that. But understanding kind of the legal framework that we're operating under, these were the, the first draft of the proposed campaign regulations of the task forces.
So let's be clear on what this means then, right? So like these folks, so folks will be able to camp out from the, the hours of nine PM till five fifty-nine AM. And then depending on whether or not they have someone who's asking them, you know, to maybe move along, they would have to move along at six AM in the morning until nine PM that evening.
Yeah.
It's, so move along with their stuff or without?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, so this is where there's more nuance to the state law in terms of what someone can reasonably be, you know, considered that they'd be able to have to have in order to safely sleep at night, right? So how much belongings that they can have or even store on public property? We can't prohibit overly be, be overly restrictive on how much somewhat personal belongings someone can have, right? Understanding that they're homeless and on the place to put it, right? If they need to leave the site. How much material are they allowed to have as personal belongings stored on public property during the days? Kind of a question that we wrestled with and how much is reasonable to consider if you have a tent, sleeping bag, a bedroll, you know, a backpack. Where, where does that get stored? You know, it's on probably where they camp or on another public right of way. But in terms of establishing, sleeping and establishing the camp, campsite, you can only do that between the hours of nine thirty and six thirty in the morning in the areas that aren't, that we haven't prohibited. And in terms of like our ability to manage that and, and help folks by, you know, prohibiting in our public parks, for example, gives us a tool that it's in our code that is somebody who's camping in our public parks, we can, you know, relocate them, we can, we can go talk to them, see if they can get services or they can, you know, are looking for shelter space and help facilitate that and also inform them where they can legally camp within the city of Sandy.
So if I can just add a little bit. One of the things that we talked with, we met with the Gresham officers was the fact that they, one of the approaches that they use and have been using in a fine grade success with is that they're traveling with a social worker who they make contact with these individuals. And of course, we, we have to, and it's a point of human decency, you know, to try and help these individuals, you know, get services where they can get some assistance. And so for those individuals who are willing to accept help, there are avenues that they can get hooked up with to get, to get those resources that they need for those individuals. And we have a handful of them out here who are out here because they want to be left alone. They don't want anybody to bother them. They won't seek help. They have no interest in that. Those are the ones that we have the ability and we have an officer who's currently doing that to the best of my knowledge and perhaps the chief or Sergeant Landry can speak more to that, but he is making contact with these individuals. And so for individuals that are not wanting assistance and just want to be left alone, we have other means that we can go down for those individuals where we can start looking at criminal and charging them with some different things and, and kind of making it uncomfortable for them to be here so that, you know, hopefully it helps to facilitate their exit. So.
Is that the person? Okay, is that the person we're kind of considering to be the social worker as one of our officers?
No, it's one of, it's one of our officers who's just been kind of, he's been kind of doing that right now in the interim. And I mean, I think probably something else that will come down later in this work session is we're going to have to look at as a council, if this is a goal of ours to deal with this properly, is looking at hiring either a part-time or another full-time position, not necessarily law enforcement, but perhaps code enforcement with a social worker. And I'm sure Jordan's got some more information on that. But you know, if this is a goal of ours, and we have said that it is, and it's obviously a goal of the public because they're speaking very loudly about it. You know, we're going to have to get creative in some of our solutions for this.
Interesting question. So to, so is what you're saying that between the hours of, what is it, six thirty or something?
Six thirty and.
And that they take down their tents, pack everything up and get out, get their backpack and, or are they leaving all their tents and everything and not?
They would have to pack it up, right? They can't have the campsite during those day, during the day. But they're, they're allowed to store their personal belongings on public property. And there's, I think, you have to think of this too, as sort of reasonable, not just for someone experiencing homeless, but anyone who uses our public property and, you know, you can think about someone in our park that is there to hang out for the day or something. They may have a picnic setup that they leave there and come back to or something, you know, so just in terms of like, you know, just as you look at the law, you know, it's not unreasonable to assume you can just leave something, you know, in, on the sidewalk or whatever, as you go into the library or whatever during the day.
It's going to be problematic not to.
But otherwise. But otherwise you can understand. If you have, if you're homeless, you have no place to put your stuff anyways, right? So it's unreasonable to say you can't have any stuff or can only carry it on your body.
So, so this is the alternative location. I mean, you have to offer an alternative location for somebody to stay. This is what we're proposing to be our alternative location when, when when dealing with somebody.
Right. Well, you have to either offer the alternative location twenty-four seven or restrict or regulate the time, place and manner.
Okay.
And so this is the time, place and manner. So as opposed to allowing somebody to have a chunk of land that can just be turned into a twenty-four seven camp. This is a way to appoints have that area presentable.
So take me through that and that kind of that conversation of thought. Is it that we, as, and we may not, like, that may just be too much for us as a community, right? As far as resources and everything else, just to have like a twenty-four hour spot like that. But like, I guess what is, what is the reason between going time, place and manner instead of like an alternative location that's just, you know, where you go?
So the concern, I think, at least for me, I'll speak for myself only, with offering an alternative location is that, is that if you look at, I believe it's the Dawls is creating these small little tiny homes.
Yes.
That they're making. And, and so the concern that I would have with something like that, while I see the the thought process behind it would be that you would increase your homeless community because you're providing a lot of extra services for them that this community, quite frankly, we can't afford. And I don't think the public wants, right? And so, so one of the things that came up in the task force is, is, and one of the reasons that we want to meet, and it sounds like was brought up maybe by you or another counselor as well, was some of our local partners, you know, some of the churches that deal with some of the homeless and offer meals and some of the other organizations, Man at Farm does some contacting with some of these individuals and whatnot, is to find out what services the community as a whole is providing so that we have a good idea of what those services are. But then also to be able to sit back and say, okay, where is that line where, you know, we don't want to draw people in, right? We don't want to increase the homeless population that we already have. And so but you have to give them someplace to be. So without creating something that entices more people to come out here. Because a lot of people, you know, in my professional experience, I can only speak to that. You know, they're coming out here because they're not being bothered like they are in Gresham and Portland, where they're having to fend, fend for their life, or they're having to protect their stuff. Where it becomes dangerous for them. They can come out here and they feel safer. They're not being bothered. They're not being contacted and they can just kind of exist.
Is it, can I, can we pull up on that a little bit?
It seems, in my little limited experience with a few of these folks in the past, some of that bothering wasn't police enforcement bothering. It was gangs and other.
Other homeless, a lot of it's just other, other homeless people.
Right.
You know, where again, you're dealing with a non-soal health component to this. And, you know, so it becomes, it can become dangerous for them in a lot of those camps. And that brings up another point, you know, you start looking at providing small shelters or homes and now you have a whole nother law enforcement issue.
Right.
That you're going to have to deal with in public safety concerns.
So.
I'm sure you can speak more to that.
I think you also have who's going to, who's going to manage those properties, right? And so it, it really comes down to a question of, since we have this pot of resources, where would our pot of resources be better to direct the shelter? And which is a, is kind of like teaching the person to fish. I'm sorry, is catching the fish for them, right? As opposed to having somebody that directs them towards the services of people that are properly trained, that have bigger resources to help them on the long-term fix, right? And so that's the, the teaching the person to fish, I guess, is the analogy I'm looking for. And so I think that's some of it too, that we have to consider is in an ideal world, I, yeah, we'd love to provide that. But I think in, in our capacity, that's going to, that's going to be too much for us because then we're going to be left holding the bag of still having to somehow get them to where they need to get. And make that bridge where if we, with that resource, if we just have that person that can direct them to different services to help them with the long-term fix, to get off the streets, while also maintaining a mechanism for the, what I believe is term service resistant population to, to allow us to still maintain our community livability issue as well.
One thing I'd just say real quickly on my ride along is we have a homeless population that is our homeless population. These are folks, some of the folks I've gone to school with, been in the area for a long time. And from my conversations is that it feels like whenever we kind of get a new individual to that population, they get identified pretty quickly as someone who's kind of new to the community and kind of on it, kind of on it, and they're kind of in and out pretty quickly. And so I only add to that to say is, it'll be interesting how the folks that are here kind of, you know, on a longer term basis, you know, how the, this kind of program interfaces with those individuals.
It seems to me we have a multiple kinds of homeless folks. And some of those folks are the ones I think we're talking about is the medical issues, mental issues, drug issues. Don't really want to be, you call them service resistant kind of folks that are really going to be difficult to figure out what to do with. I'm old enough, I remember we used to put them in clinics, but they really looked like prisons is what they looked like, but I know we don't do that anymore. And then we have the next level up of people who are who are either living on the couch of some relative or they make just barely enough money to be able to own a car. Or maybe a, I have a nephew that's in this boat. He owns a very ugly RV that runs sometimes. But has enough money that can making different kinds of jobs and stuff to keep the little generator going or maybe buy enough food, but camps alongside of the road. Be able to deal with going in and out of jobs. And then the people that I, I see that are really, my heart reaches out to is folks that are making thirty thousand dollars a year that can't afford even a apartment. And they're living out of a car and it's a husband and wife or a family anyway with kids and everything. They would love to rent, love to buy, but have no means by which that, where does that line and what kind of things are we doing to establish? Or is there even any possible way of helping each of the different levels of people like that? Are we focusing only on the most difficult?
Well, for us, for us as a city, the way I see it is that we don't have the funding or the finances to truly help or deal with those, in those circumstances, right? But there are services available. There are social services. There's public services. There's social and public assistance. There's various things now. Some of the things that I have heard, and obviously I don't have firsthand knowledge with some of those, is that it can be very difficult to navigate. It can be very difficult for people if they don't have internet, driver's license, social security numbers, things like that, to get assistance and getting set up with some of these services. And that's where the social workers and some of that come in because they know how to navigate the system. They can help these guys get their birth certificates, help them get their ID cards and various things like that and get them the services that they need. We don't have that capacity right now in the city of Sandy. So, and we don't have the funding for it. And so that's why I think kind of one of the outcomes of this task force is that we're going to need to look at utilizing, you know, the, a social service individual who can help with some of this stuff.
We got several comments. So first of all, task force, I, I really like the proposals that have come up. I think there's a lot of good stuff here. And as we make these comments, please take that in the, you know, and we're building off good work. So the second is in, in my work years ago as a leader in, in our, in our church, I spent some time with some folks, some of whom were homeless, nearly homeless, became homeless and so forth. And then also helping my daughter with, working with my wife to navigate social services to get her set up on social security. That is a full-time job for my wife to spend that two or three years that it took of following up and the appointments and the, and even today to keep it on it, to make sure that you miss one filing. All of a sudden you're off and you, you no longer have that income source. So you are right in that it takes somebody very skilled. I only, most people, most of the people who are in that situation do not have the skills necessary to navigate it. And that's just the reality. You can give them a form, but half the time, you know, with college education, you're reading the form, you don't know what to put on it and what they're going to do with it. So, so that's, that's a big part. Second part is the city, right? We don't have the funds to deal with this problem. Mostly we have a few minor services that we do offer, you know, meals for seniors and things like that, that, that kind of start to fall in that category that are helpful. But the county does have the responsibility to do this. And so I think we have to look or partner and make sure that this far wing of the county is being, getting its fair share of services. So that I think is important. The, the last point that I want to make in regards to the time, place, manner or a dedicated campground is I think there's a, there's an area between where instead of a limited housing like the Dawls where you're, you know, you're really going, there's a big step function to go up to that, to just having a dedicated camping area, I think is something that would be something that we should look at. Now, I think we have to have something in place now and then some, maybe look at expanding or doing something different in the future. So I like the proposal for the, the zones that are for like today, something bring forward and move forward. But I think we do need to look forward to maybe a dedicated camping area. I like the idea of a dedicated camping area because it's, it's a thought, public input. We're not sacrificing large zones by putting people into, by providing such a place. We can actually put rules and restrictions on what they do while they're there. And if they disobey them, you can remove them. And if that's the case, then what you start to do is you start to screen people who are service resistant. Just the, and then they, there's no place in the city for them anymore. They have to leave. Or those who want to be helped, then they can stay. So, and I think we could potentially co-locate those things with the city service, city facilities. For example, the new wastewater plant, why not? If there's extra space there, put a concrete area for camping, put in a, a permanent bath facilities, put in the surveillance to make it safe. I would rather deal, I'd rather, you know, make, work with the devil, you know, than the devil you don't. I'd rather have our officers trolling lighted, safe areas, security cameras, even fences than wandering through parks and woods at night.
My only concern with something like that would be, again, I'm not in law enforcement, so I'd like somebody who is in law enforcement to chime in on that. But my only concern with that would be, would be the policing and not necessarily by law enforcement, but just the general policing, the term policing of a facility like that. And then my concern would also be half of the, a lot of the reason that those individuals are coming out here is because they're not getting in contact with other homeless people who are threatening them or taking their belongings or whatever that may be. You create a space like that and my concern would be that would be a nightmare. Where we would create a host of potential problems and I'm definitely open to looking at something like that. I would want feedback from people who deal with stuff like that.
Agreed.
And, and see what generates from that because oh, if you look at like dignity village, if you talk to some of the people who respond into those areas, it's, it is a public safety nightmare. And we already have a police force that is stretched very, very thin. So I would have some, I would, I would want to speak to people who deal with that to know more.
So we started.
Feasibility, please.
And I don't know the answer to this. Dignity Village, do they have rules? I, I, that, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know if they were.
I would assume that there's, that there's certain rules, but I certainly wouldn't know.
Yeah. Because, you know, what's appealing to me about it is, is one is, is right now at least, it'd be like, it'd be like a group of nine, you know what I mean? Like not, there's nine campers.
You'd have more than nine.
Okay.
You'd have a lot more than nine.
But just real quick though, just, and I'll shut up, I promise the other. But just real quick though, just, and I'll shut up, I promise, another to speak, but every community's doing this, right? So it's not ju, uh my point being is, is uh Sandy's not the only one coming online. With like, you know, this alternative camp location, so it's not like Sandy comes online with an alternative camp location now. We're a feeder for Gresham, Portland, Happy Valley, Estacada, and a lot of everybody else. Everyone is having, everyone around Oregon, the country, quite honestly. Is having the same conversation that we're having tonight. Go ahead, Catherine, sorry.
Um, you know, Sandy's a really small town. And we, you know, we're growing, but we're not growing that fast and. I'm really excited about the opportunities that we have now for, you know, kind of growing our parks and recreation and having. Place for teens to hang out after school and, you know, a place for seniors to be engaged and and get help. And get services and and all that costs money and it's gonna cost us more money than we've been. Spending for those services in the past and where's that money gonna come from? I'm really concerned about that. And so when we start talking about creating a whole new social service organization in this city. You know, when, when we already serve, you know, Estacada with the bus service, we take, we serve the government camp people to, you know, people to go skiing up in Mount Hood. And and all the the mountain folks that, you know, use all our services and and our parks and all that. I am really concerned that we as a small city. If we start providing all these social services and and all that, we will not have money to do all the things that we are really important about. That like the parks and trails and and the thing I I think about is that. The reality of this is that millions and millions and tens of millions and hundreds of millions of dollars are being. Spent at the state level to deal with these issues, homelessness and and addiction counseling and mental health issues. And huge amounts of money going to nonprofits and um and building, you know, new education centers, and we certainly need all those things. But but the reality is this, if that we start that, if we start going down that road. You know, we got seven now, we're gonna have seventeen the next week, seven, seventy the week, month after, and seven hundred. You know, it's just going to, you know, the reason that people like to come out Sandy, well, we're gonna have those same kind of issues when we start offering the services. You know what? I, I know, I, this is my, this is my time to kind of say my opinion is I am very concerned. We have a free bus service that goes in there. And and it is not our role and nor do we have the budget for the mandate to deal to. Become social service providers for the homeless. Our job is parks, roads, streets, sewer, water. You know, we we've got a few mandates that we need to kind of focus on and. What I wanna see here, and I'm gonna try to just, you know, move forward, but. What I wanna see is kind of exactly what these guys have done is kind of, we've got some areas where people can, you know, sleep overnight and deal with that. And then a a huge amount of push to kind of get them into the services that are being provided in a much larger setting like Gresham, Hackamas County. And those places. And then, you know, we all need to be part of the solution of making sure that all these other hundreds of millions of dollars that are getting allocated. Get allocated to the services that are needed in that bigger setting. But we cannot afford to duplicate the services that those folks are providing because we can't afford it. And it will definitely come at the expense of everything else that our taxpayers are asking us to provide. And I'm not really willing to make that sacrifice at this point.
Thank you. Uh let's go to Carl and then we'll go.
I wanna agree and disagree with both sides here. Been around this thing a little bit, uh I don't know if some of you remember or not, but there was the bunkhouse over on Pioneer that was worked out of our office. Our office owned that building and we provided a place for people who were on the very edges of.
Placed people there back when.
Very difficult place. The thing that stopped that was we had a fire, somebody cooked something too long and walked away from it, we got burned part of the building down. Until we ended up going to couches, they end up going to creeks, they end up going to, you know, all kinds of different places to be able to. That one of them died, I understand. Very sad, very difficult. Uh they came into our office to pay their rent of a few dollars a month, just. Very difficult thing to watch for. Those are our people. Those are people that live here, they have relatives here. I guess I I think it's our responsibility. I I disagree that we cannot afford to um try to figure out some sort of solution. We cannot afford not to do something because of the kinds of people we have. These are our nephews, our sisters, our brothers. Um in some cases, maybe even our parents, to turn our back on those people, I I think is a really disservice to our community. Now, I definitely agree that we don't have the money to be able to provide them. You know, I was in a workshop here a few years back in Salem where we had a conversation about how people. In Salem dealt with the same situation, pretty primitive, pretty basic kind of facility for them to go to. Relatively inexpensive, but the problem was find um keeping people safe, sanitation issues. They were only supposed to be there for a period of time and they were there for years. It it causes all kinds of issues and it draws other people in and all, all the things. It's not gonna be an easy solution for us, but I think we need to start dealing with it in some format. Maybe small time, maybe just a little bit of effort here and there. The dawn in that, um my church has spent a lot of energy and time feeding, trying to find homes for some of these people as well, so there. There are lots of services out there that I think we can work our way through, but I'm not real excited about putting in a. Five acres or even half an acre someplace and put them all up in tiny homes at this point, but I am also not willing to turn my back on.
So Catherine, the only part I disagree with is the, is, is really. The the fact that we we do need to do something because it's not, but the the need is not being dealt with. Now, the part I do agree with you on. City can't afford to pay it and we shouldn't have to. This responsibility is from the state, the county. What I would like to see staff work and actively and Mayor you as well, work with our our uh county people to see. What monies they have coming down the pipe with some of these initiatives and tap into that money, just like we run a library district and other things on behalf of the county. I would like to see county money fund the kinds of positions that you guys are talking about.
Mess, and and so you know, that's the kind of meeting I'm looking for when that's talked about on that list, right? Is it's let's get all those factions together into a room and really talk about, but the problem is that we know what resource we need to be plugged into.
So, so that social services liaison, I mean, that's clearly to me, when the county guys came out here and they gave their pitch, it's like, send your guys down to. To Oregon City. Well, that doesn't work. We know it doesn't work. We need, we need people here from the county co-located and those services here. And we can run them out of here if we get the money behind it.
Just, just real quick, the the one thing I I I just, I do wanna point out is, is, cause I, and and I promise I'm gonna go to yours. Is I I don't want off, I I I am so frustrated that we have, that this is where we're at as far as. Uh what we, how we have to address this problem, right? I mean, but the truth is, is that there's Ninth Circuit Court decisions. There's house bills that have been passed and signed that put communities like ours and probably more importantly, our police officers who are on the front lines. Kind of in this set of rules, this box that we have to abide by and move forward with, you know, and. And so as a result, if we don't address this or come up with some sort of alternative resource or location. Our officers will have nothing to do, you know, when they interact with someone that's homeless or has a campsite because we now have no tools at their disposal.
Agreed.
You know, for them to 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 move around with. Go ahead, Rich.
Well, as everyone talks, y'all talk my same points. But making sure my voice is heard too, um you know, we talked about all the communities in Oregon are dealing with it, that's not necessarily true. We're a city.
Right.
So Welch's, um the government camp and all that really is their city regardless of what we may think outside our boundaries. Are part of Sandy. It doesn't really matter what we say, hey, this is our boundary, you aren't or are in our city. Everyone adopted and you tell them, babe, where they live. I live in Sandy, right? My parents live in Boring, four miles down the road, Sandy phone number, boring address, they 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 think they could. They should vote for who is ever on council, anyway, but the point being is that's where the community for them. We have a large community. So going back to the point of the county and asking the county, where is the county and their resources they have? And the type of partnerships that come out of that, you you know, we do the, the food, um. Uh, well, uh, sorry, I'm skipping my memory, you know what I'm talking about. Meals on wheels, right? And our community is um larger than our city limits and that's something that they help chip in with. Is it their full thing? You know, probably not, but it is, is, you know, better than nothing in that. Um we know we have the the library district as well, you know, we have others as well. We are the community hub. Curious on what Estacada's doing um as another small community just to the south of us. Uh yes, we do have bus rides and those type of things and making sure that it. Doesn't become more attractive, you know, to not have to be dealing with what's ever going on there just from the Sandy uh because of that. I do think we need to do something to the mayor's point there. We've been dealt our cards for us. Um with little ability to maneuver and what what areas we have been able to maneuver, we've had a change, you know, a couple of times. Since I've been on council and because of the Ninth Circuit Court. But I think it's better to have something in place that we can, even though we may not like it, some of it's around planning, you know, and. What the state's doing for housing and, you know, we've all sat up here and been very frustrated with what the state has done on our behalf for us and told us what we have to do. But at least we were able to try to guide within side those guidelines, because they're gonna, we have to abide by them anyways. And then go after some additional uh fundings there. I get concerned in both directions. I don't know. Which is the right way or the wrong way. Um I can see the plus and minuses of both. To Carl's point, these are relatives that are. Family, our friends and people we grew up with. Um on the other hand, you know, some of them aren't and uh, you know, to. Some of the points that you brought up, you know, leaving that, I just happen to drive through Portland, you know, once every year uh to Hillsborough. And, you know, it it in anyone that has, you know, that's not what we want here, and I think that's why we get so frustrated because we see. That and and so if we can put in policies to make sure that doesn't keep happening and that we. Are proactive and do something when things arise, then that won't, I hope, happen. Um I know Gresham has, I run Spring Water Trail, you can tell exactly where Gresham and Portland start because Gresham had. You feel safe in one and not in the other. I ran Hood to Coast and uh, oh man, you can definitely tell where in in and they know. You know, and so some of those policies not be, might not be the best. It may be controversial, it may not be, but it's something that they've had to deal with more than we have, so. Um I don't wanna see our carts turn into other areas or our public spaces like what Portland or others have had to deal with. Um that's not our community and I know our community is, does not want that either. In fact, we all got an email today. Um and Jeff, thank you for responding um to that, and I think that to that same point, um. Our community is very aware and actively watching. I don't know what the perfect example is, but I also caution on the place and manner. Because, and I forget exactly with the map, where exactly you were guys were pointing out, I could tell industrial, right? But you're gonna be against someone's private property and so you are gonna affect their business. When we're the other, so um and if it was your business, you gotta keep that in mind too. So does the city have to purchase property or do those things? I'm also Larry because our, sorry, I'm speaking loud. I I silence for the whole.
I was gonna say you waited your time.
But uh, but, you know, we all went through and and created a a fee for another officer, right? And uh and to help with the crime and that type of thing, and now we're back to our community asking, maybe asking for more. If that's the case, I mean, that. We get to see a lot more here and be able to talk it out and hash it out and understand more. And, oh, that's why we do this, that's why we do that. It's to us to communicate that. That's not how the majority of the public sees it. Uh nor they, do they hear it when we explain it to them. Does that make sense? I think it does for all of us because we've all done it with our friends and families as they debate us, so. I didn't give you any solutions. I just gave you more thoughts of where, like I said, I do think we need to do something. Um because we need to follow it, so we are not doing something, it puts us in a worse bind.
Yeah. So I just wanted to address a few things that I, that's why I was kind of looking for. Um to Catherine's point, I'd like to, you know, what we're not, I don't think anywhere in this proposal is we are asking to provide those services. But, you know, you guys work for the federal government, I I work for the government, right? It, government can be a bureaucracy of challenges and add in some mental health components, adding some substance abuse issues. Add in many of the issues that uh some of the homeless population has, that bureaucracy can be kind of overwhelming, right? And so what, what we're more saying is a person that can direct the people that need the help to where to get the help, not provide that help. That's, that's, I don't think we have that capacity, nor are we even trying to propose that, nor would I even say that's in the realm of possibilities. But I do think having uh somebody like, uh I I really do, I I spend a lot of time. Uh looking at the different models that are out there and I really do, not just because they're our neighbor and that, but I really do like what Gresham was doing. Um and so, because the one thing is, uh I believe his name's Michael Dogger, and I think he's the one that kind of coined this. Is for some reason as a society and we've kind, and we've kind of tried to link tolerance and compassion, but the two need to go hand in hand, right? And so we can be super compassionate, but not tolerant for out of line behavior, right? And so that's kind of what we're asked, that's kind of what I think we're trying to get at with something like this. Is the compassion piece, because I don't want, if somebody wants help, like I truly do not, I wanna be able to say, hey, this is where you go, this is how you can do it. And I think Jeff Argubright, to his credit, if he's listening or Sandy, listen, if you guys are listening, right? I think he's been doing a great job with it, right? And so, but it is, as we grow, as things like ballot measure one ten happen. As a lot of different things happen, right, that I I don't personally like, right? As that stuff starts to play the effects of that more and more, that's gonna reach a police officer's capacity, right? And so looking at alternate alternatives to help get those people directed to where they need to go is what we're proposing there. So, um that's that. So the time, place and manner, like, yeah, we can get an area, but I will say this. Um if you look. At some different areas, Eugene, Portman, right? And and those are uh of Seattle, there's a lot of places that have designated places. I would just challenge you to look at that and see if that is what you feel. Because I don't think, I think it creates too many challenges for that accountability piece, the tolerance piece, right? Again, compassion can be here, but the tolerance doesn't, and so you create this, this challenge of allowing a spot where your tolerance, you you just can't control how. Tolerant you are, it kind of just takes over and it's a machine that needs to keep being fed after that. This right here kind of, kind of provides the accountability piece, right? You can't stay here forever, right? Here's somebody that can help you if you want the services, right? If you don't, then there's consequences for your actions. Um and so I think that's, that's one of the things I hear. And so, but if if, I also, to Jeremy's point, recognize and understand that. We would be put, like, somebody could potentially camp in the backyard of somebody's business, right? Again, I think it's important to remember that nowhere in this rule. Doesn't allow you to do inappropriate things. It allows you to set up a spot to be dry and warm and stuff, right? And and it doesn't allow you to make a mess, it does not allow you to do rude behavior, it doesn't allow you to use illegal substances. We still have. Mechanisms to to do that, but I also do recognize again with that, out the tolerance piece. You have a population that has a high number of substance abuse challenges, uh mental health challenges. And without somebody there to direct them, I I respect and understand the businesses um of that, and so. In that respect, I would challenge them to really write their their elected officials at higher levels and say, hey, this rule isn't into effect. But would you rather have it back here or in the back of your residence, right? Or beside a school like the one of them down in Eugene, right? And so I think what we try to do is is honestly place these spots when we were talking about this. In a spot that would best fit our community. It's not perfect, I I think we all recognize that and understand that. But it's, it's better than beside our school, it's better than behind our house, um it's better than in our park where our kids are gonna go play. Um and that, and again, it doesn't. And, and again, it doesn't stop. It, it brings us in compliance with the law and it doesn't stop all the. Stuff that really brings out what people. Don't like.
Alright, yeah.
I really like what you guys do, I really support it and I, and I think it's really important for everybody. In the whole state to understand that the Boise decision and the Grant's past decision and all did not. Allow or give any kind of, you know, card to sanction what is going on in Portland, which I go to about once a week because my. Daughter lives down there or, or to, you know, go down Marine Drive or any other areas where you see that, that is not what the Boise decision said that we have to tolerate. And so. And, and yet it's kind of being implied that there's nothing we can do about it because of the Boise decision and. And so I do like the idea of the fact that, you know, we can't, we don't have this situation where they're actually just living. On the sidewalks in our town, I don't think that's helping them or us, so I really like the way you handled that. The six thirty to nine thing, you know, there's probably some. You know, it's dark as, you know, it's really dark at six thirty in the morning, I mean, I think there might be some compassion in there to, you know. Mess with those hours a little bit. Just so that, you know, I mean, trying to get up at six thirty and get everything packed up and all that, I don't know, there might be some, some, you know. Tweaking of those hours, you know, something like eight to, you know, eight to eight or eight to ten or whatever it is, but you know, some, somehow. Again, they're allowed to camp on public property that's not excluded. Because there, because there's not other places for them to go and we have to allow that. Time and place, so.
So, I'm hearing a lot of agreement across the board, just real quick and I'll go to Jeremy, just a couple of things that we wanted, staff wanted to take away from our conversation tonight. Right, is the camping code amendments, which we've spent a lot of time on. RV parking permit program, which I feel like we have quite vast council support to just move forward on, but.
I have one question.
Okay, and then. And then just provide direction on the homeless forum, homelessness forum listening session that we want to have, so we do want to kind of direct staff in those directions as well. I see Dawn and then I'll go to Jeremy.
Okay, so on the, I just quick comments on the, on the camping code, some things for you guys to consider. I, I would love to see us prohibit shopping carts. Unless they can prove they own them. You know, something like that, I mean, it's just one of those eyesores that you see, I, I don't want to see it. Yep, the other is on the deed, notwithstanding the provisions of the chapter, the city manager doesn't name a temporarily authorized under. The third one. I, I'd like to see that as a decision of the council. So that we don't have to modify the code, but if the council says we want to authorize. Or extend the hours or change the hours or change the location. Then, then the council could rather than just the city manager, I'd rather see it come back to the council.
For the, which one was that for that? Oh, camping, yeah.
It's D on mine. For the RV stuff and then I'll, I'll be done, I would like to make sure that. However, we write it for parking on streets that if, if possible, we can include the right of ways associated with the street. I'm, I'm gonna make sure shoulders and areas are considered. Parking as well, rather than not just as far as we can, I don't know what the legal limits are, but broaden that as far as we can on that.
Are you speaking to like turkey knots and all of that?
Maybe unimproved right of way, right, not just the street, but. The way it says, it says parking on the street, well, if I'm just off the street with three of the four wheels or four, am I on this, you know, but I just want to make sure we. We've broadened that a little bit. I'd also like to see the no cost permit actually have a minimal cost. Potentially that money goes into a fund to dispose of RVs.
Well, one of the things, if I, if I can just speak to that real quick, so one of the things that we didn't want to. Deter from is like, if I use my neighborhood as an example, in the summertime, a lot of people go and fetch their RVs out of storage. They bring them in on a Thursday, they load them up, they take them camping, they come back on Monday, you know, maybe they keep them parked out for a week while they clean them up and things like that. We didn't want to make it so prohibitive or so challenging that our citizens were having to fight with a bureaucratic system. What we wanted to do was create an avenue where we can deal with these vacated RVs, so without. Penalizing, you know, our citizens who have RVs and, and bring them into the neighborhoods in the summertime, you know, to camp and whatnot, so that's. That's kind of why that.
Consideration, I will abide by whatever you guys.
Just give me some background.
Just one more thing about that, right, is that provides law enforcement a tool to go up and contact somebody, right, even if they're legally parked. And they don't have that permit.
No, I like the idea, I'm just saying. Yeah, a five dollar fee will deter most of the people that we're talking about and maybe not your neighbors. The, the last one is with apartments and RVs, you, you limit it to six per property and you really don't clarify whether it's apartment owner property or. Or how that would work, so I think that's something that needs a little bit of thought, is how that would apply to multi-unit.
I don't think it does, it's duplexes, townhomes and single family homes, so if you're in an apartment. It's not just shut up right away anyways, it's apartment capacity to park.
We get RVs parked along the cascade apartments today on Debarco. They do.
Um, yeah, I know, I'm so, so as, as written, it wouldn't, you wouldn't be allowed to get a permit unless. Townhome duplex or.
The six RV parking, that's for.
Property owner.
Six times a year, it's not six vehicles per one property.
Could be a different vehicle, yeah, I mean, but.
But I mean, if that property exceeded six, you're done for the year, whatever, whether it's six at once or. Or one, six times, you're done. And just think about, you know, we do have parents, like my parents come, used to come before they left here now, and they parked RV there for two, three weeks. I would not be allowed. I would run out of time in my three weeks.
We, yeah, we had, we had discussed that, you know, that, that people do that and it was kind of one of those where we'd left it up to that. That could be kind of an open ended thing, like you'd be able to, you know, potentially come in and say, hey, here's my situation. Right, and then, you know, that would be kind of. We had talked about maybe that. What's that?
Maybe an escalating fee for longer periods of time.
So that's where I was confused, just to get clarification on what the intent is, so the top part of it. The O three O section says, you know, it's, it's, no, nobody shall park a trailer for more than seventy two hours. And then in the next section down, it says you have to have a permit to even park it at all, because it's, you need a permit. For a period not to exceed seventy two hours.
So this is.
Your permit's only gonna be for seventy two hours, so everybody needs a permit, so if I stop at the.
This is where we can get some counsel. And take it back to the task force, too, is the definitions on these things is confusing. What constitutes a recreational vehicle, a camper versus a camper trailer? Do you also want to require for like boats or just somebody with their trailer with wood in it to get a permit as well?
Well, I'm just asking, but your, your A thing says that anybody who's just even coming into town.
These are things that we wanted to, we wanted this conversation, right, this was something that we wanted council to, to ask.
Trying to understand the intent, is the intent of A, a person may park a camper, blah, 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 for not to exceed seventy two hours if you get a permit, so if I come in. For one day, I gotta go get a permit. Is that what we're saying?
So currently under current city code, you cannot park a vehicle outside of your driveway, it cannot sit for more than seventy two hours. So, today, 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 period.
I, I'm familiar with that because somebody called me in before seventy two hours when I was, my park, my driveway was getting paved and I was parked at the John's and Overlook.
Yes, counselor, if, if you're just coming for the day. This gives an officer a tool or a code enforcement person to come up and say, hey, your RV's parked there, we have a no cost permit, would you like, what, and they can just do it on the spot, you know? Or to say, oh, I'm just parked there for an hour, good to meet my friend, we're out of town, okay, yeah, you know.
So what's the problem, I mean, so given that people do come and, you know, spend a couple of days or whatever. I guess, I'm, I'm not sure why we'd need to, I, why wouldn't we just allow them seventy two hours and after seventy two hours, then you have to get a permit.
So this is why, so it, what it's designed to do is keep you from. Currently, my understanding is over in the Cascadia Village, there's an RV that's going around, they'll stay for seventy two hours, they'll go down the road a little bit.
There's horse trailers like that too.
So what this is designed to do is prevent you from moving a little bit and still camping around the city, right?
So the way we do that in Forest Services, you can't, you know, you have to, you can stay fourteen days and then you have to be off the forest for at least thirty days. And not to exceed so many days in a year.
Yeah, but Captain Moore City, they have a small forest department that doesn't have the time to drive, spend their days driving around looking for these guys, so we're trying to come up with a way. That we can police it, that law abiding citizens will follow, that makes it easy for our community and still gets us the teeth and the wherewithal to go after these.
So to me, it feels like it's a time thing because. Be, because you, you're not, I'm not hearing complaints about the RV that's been abandoned. For seventy two hours, I'm hearing complaints about the RV that's been sitting out there for a month. You know, and no one's done anything about it, and so I just, I feel like a lot of this can just be fixed with more of a reasonable amount of time. You know, maybe it's longer than seventy two hours until we address it. But allows our officers a reasonable amount of time to go, okay, this is a zombie RV, you know, we need to do something about it.
Well, we want that vehicle attached to it, right, so that you're not.
Period, so, yeah.
If, and, and I agree, that, that was actually one of the things that came up is. Lots of people's family come stay in town and they just bring their RV and that's, that's their residence or their place to stay, right? And we were, by doing this, we were trying to allow seventy two hours is just, I guess, the starting point, like it, I'm open to whatever. But we were trying to allow a, a mechanism so that people can stay. There's, it's attached to a residence, so I'm not just driving in from Gresham, parking my RV in front of. Dawn's house and just saying, I'm, I'm here now, right, and so that permit is tied to a residence, right, and that, that's the person that gets it. The timeframe, I think, that's squishy, we can, we can work with that. I stole that.
You didn't like it, no one liked the word.
But, but you know, so that, that was what that was designed to do and while it's still allowing exactly what you described, or allowing the people that have. RVs to, you know, from what I understand, Oregon cities, like you have this much time and if you're not out there. Same thing with Gresham, like we're trying to be open to our citizens and allow them, but.
So two issues that you have to resolve, okay, first of all, we've got tourists that come into the town all the time, they're going to park, you have to allow for that in the code, so however you put that in there. You've got to have some provision for people passing through, stopping at businesses, McDonald's on the road, whatever, and, and make sure that's okay. Second of all, you've got to deal with weekends and when the city offices are open. So if you're going to require a permit within an hour of landing on a Sunday, you've got to provide a vehicle, a way for them to purchase and obtain a permit. On that Sunday or. A period of time that's a grace period before that permit has to be issued, so however you guys want to do it.
To something that they fill out online.
Could be done, however you guys want to do it, I just, it just has to make sure that you can address that.
Yeah, I, I have a little list here that I've been just thinking about. Now I'm confused, but. Because it's been answered and, and debated and answered and debated, but I mean. One, the online, I was like, this has to be online, like, there's no way, this is not okay. Two, I don't want to create, I know we have an issue we're trying to solve, but government creates red tape. And we try to solve things, but, man. We get too much into it, no one's gonna want to do it because the red tape, it's, it's inconvenience, that goes to the fee. I would say there is no fee and here's why. One, I feel like your nickel and diamond are on residence and I don't like being nickled and dined, so when anyone starts nickeling and diming me, I get resistance. Right, like, just stop, even if it's a dollar, you know, it's just like, you're nickel and diming, this, it takes away from the livability. From the people that are law abiding, people that are there, because we got a few people that aren't law abiding. That I'm having to pay the price for in my own livability, part of it. Also with the fee, it's kind of like you want them to do it. If you put charge a buck, I'm not wanting to do it. But the tree permit is the same way, we wanted people to go and get a tree permit because we wanted to know who they were and make sure that they were. This isn't a city tree, this is your tree, so go ahead and cut it down, you know, whatever it might be, no, this is actually a city tree and you can't cut it, you know, we wanted people to do it. And not just go do it and not, you know, ask, ask for forgiveness later, and so I think that's a big thing on the permit thing and, and when you're coming around just a, a small fee. I think it's, yeah, people aren't gonna do it there, the seventy two hours, we talked about it before, I think it's too short. I think that. For all the reasons it was brought up, you know, we have guests and visitors and relatives, we also got the people that camp every weekend. And I see these as I run around, see, I got my running around and, we're running around town in the morning because they're sitting on the street and then they're gone, I, I run every day. And I see them and they're gone and they're, they take three day weekends, whatever, and I know it's not to have the. City be their parking space, I'm really frustrated with those people that think that the, the city street is their parking space. I get that, but it's also the livability of why we are that community of not over policing ourselves.
But it is a balance, Jeremy.
It's a balance.
Drive down my road, it's hard to even get to my house.
I, I get that, I get that, and those aren't RVs or things. Those are just cars and I, and I totally get that. But then it just brings in confusion, people are just confused and so I like and I understand. Hey, we want to know, I think there is a period, hey, if you're gonna be parked here for more than, maybe it's a week. You know, that we do, we educate, you know, we're not firing, you just put a sticker on there and they can register those things. And that will help with the, the zombie, you know, and I think the attachment that the police officer puts on there and say, hey, you know. Registers will kind of gradually get in here, not that we're trying to, trying to make sure that it's the communication. That this isn't a zombie type of a event, it's more of a, trying to be a. You know. It's attached to your house and those type of things, but I think this whole six times a year thing. I mean, we're a community that lives next to a mountain, we like to go camping and come back. Honestly, this doesn't affect me one way or the other personally, because one, I have a large enough driveway, but. I know. I mean, everyone. I don't, careful I say that.
Maybe it should be the alternative.
But, but now I've really lost my train of thought on that one. But the idea though is, you know, we want to be able. Not to penalize our own residents that love to live next to a mountain and go camping. Every weekend in those type of things and be able to do that as well, so there's that fine balance, I get that, but those are my thoughts in. As it comes to each of those things that I wrote down.
Yeah, I agree there.
Yes, just super quick, because I know you wanted to end this so we can start council, but. So this, part of the seventy two hours, because there seems, seems to be some, a little bit of heartburn with this group, with that timeframe. One is that we wanted to follow what our current city code was and recognizing that most of the citizens in Sandy know that they have seventy two hours. And, and they know this, right, so if we, if we look to change that, now we have to re-educate the public that, hey, by the way, now you can park your car for ninety six hours. Or a hundred and twenty two hours or whatever that may be, so we wanted to stay uniform with that so that we didn't have to re-educate people because people are pretty compliant with that. We also. Wanted to keep it free for your, the very same reason that you said, was we didn't want to penalize our citizens, but what we are trying to stop and to deal with. Are those individuals and there are quite a few of them in town who park an RV that's dilapidated or derelict. And they leave at the seventy two hours and when their seventy two hours is up, they park it on the other side of the street for seventy two hours and then they park it. Up the street for seventy two hours, those are the ones that we're try, kind of trying to capture. And then of course the just flat derelict, he left it here, right, so I don't. You know, obviously what this body wants to do is, is, is what we will move forward with, but just so you know, that was the thought process behind the time.
Real quick, I, I agree with what Jeremy is talking about in terms of, let's try to find a balance, I'm not real excited about charging for the permit. I have about such or seven small little things, I'm assuming I can give somebody. By email later on, I know you want to start the counseling. I think it's really important that we find a way to get people to obey and if you pick up the changes, it's not gonna happen. I have in my mind about four different built cars and RVs and trailers that are parked around my place, it's just. They're a mess, but they really aren't the zombie things, that's not the one that was down here a while that somebody burned because they were so sick and tired. We've seen it parked, those are the really bad things, we gotta get those things. The other ones are kind of just machibious, the guys that are parking their RV because they want, don't want to park it. In a rental someplace, they just want to put it in their front yard or. Some are in their driveway, their apron, so. I think keep it simple, keep it available, don't make our citizens criminals because we can't make them figure it out. And I'll send you a text message during.
Alright, well, thank you everybody, I think you guys got good feedback and some info on that, and the last thing, just on the homelessness forum and listening center. Listening center, listening session, to me, that was always something to bring together, the group doing the. The needs analysis. And the homelessness task force, our city council. Our city council. Sandy Action Center. Sandy Connect.
A lot of the local churches, I think.
Local, reach out to the local faith community. Remember, a lot of these, there's so much overlap here, like even though I name these groups, it's like six people. And uh, in the Clackamas County Services and then our police department. Um, but tha- that would, those would be the players. And I I think probably just an update from the needs analysis, you know, anyone of those groups that kind of want to give an update. My guess would, that would just be kind of probably the needs analysis group, maybe the action center. Um. And then it'd be nice to hear from Clackamas County Services on money, resources, what other communities are doing. And then let's just try, then then we'll just navigate a discussion, this stuff, problems and solutions and. We're kind of the greater group, but at least that's what's in my head. And anybody else have anything to kind of?
Would you say that I'd like to make sure that our um, new uh, Parks and Rec Department, Community Services. Program is also tied in because where I'm sitting, I see that our parks, operations, maintenance folks, they're out there patrolling. And seeing these homeless camps in parks or whatever are are the key reporters, cleaning up the homeless camps is getting part of the. The mandate for them, working with ant farmer volunteers or whatever. So really tying those people into the the social service.
Is that parks or is it more public works or?
It's it's the community services, you know, parks and trails are now part of, not part of public works, that part of.
Okay.
The Parks and Rec uh, folks. So I mean, that's where all those homeless camps have been is in parks and so.
Now, do you see this as a city council meeting advertised as such and all?
Uh, well, I I see us breaking quorum on it, so we'll probably have to do it as a city council meeting, but. As far as us sitting up here and this being the location, everything else, I'm, I'm open my, it could be at the fire annex for all I care and on a night that's more amenable to the community.
Yeah, and then and then I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the things that we've discussed in the task force meeting was that if it was going to be a council meeting that we. I mean, we all, we all have our own ideas. That's why we're all sitting in these chairs, but that we really let the other individuals do the talking and maybe we just listen. So.
I I'm okay deferring to the the task force as well, so.
Totally.
Either way.
Okay.
Great.
All right, sweet. Thanks, guys. With that, why don't we adjourn? Um, try to like do it real quick. Let's try to get back on seven fifteen. It's like two minutes to start up.
Two.
The council meeting to order. Please uh, join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, just to keep him on his toes, let's start with you doing the the role right away. Jeremy? Not Jeremy.
That guy down there.
Yeah, that guy. Here.
Here.
Pastor Sheldon, here. Pastor Walker.
Here.
Pastor Exer.
Present.
I'm here. Here. Uh, all right, quick review of tonight's uh, agenda. Um, we will be calling for any changes to the agenda. We'll then go to our public comment. We have someone who signed up online earlier today. Has anyone signed up in person?
Oh, man.
All right, great. Uh, so we'll go to the person online at that time. Uh, we'll then go to our consent agenda, which has our Sandy City Council meeting minutes from November first. Under all business, we have to select the date for our planning commission interviews. We have our three sixty second Bell Street Extension Project update. Which will lead into our new business conversation on uh, the Declaration of a Public Necessity on the Bell Street three sixty second Extension Project. Will then wrap up our evening with a report from our city manager and our committee and council reports. With that, is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, let's go to public comment. The council welcomes comments at this time. Uh, for those participating online, um, this is um. The time, uh, please dot, well, do they need to do any dialing or are you just going to be ready to go, Jeff? I have a public comment from a Beth Sykes. Is she online?
So mayor, I don't see that name right now. I, we could ask perhaps that she uh, raised her hand in case she signed in under a different name.
Then why don't we look for Beth? Uh, if you're under another name and watching the meeting, um, please use the raised hand button. If you're participating via telephone, star nine, um, and that will raise your hand.
I'll just wait a moment. And so mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right.
Unfortunately.
Well, with that, let's uh, move on with our city council agenda for this evening. Uh, we will move to our consent agenda unless there's a discussion. I will entertain a motion to adopt our consent agenda.
A move that we accept the consent agenda.
For a second. There's a motion by councillor Exer, a second by councillor Walker to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by say nay. I opposed, nay. Uh, Moshe Carries. I voted aye on that, just in case that came out weird. Uh, under old business, let's select a date for planning commission interviews. Was there a more popular date from those who did vote? Did anybody vote? Or was I the only one who didn't vote?
There have been the uh. The best date was uh, this Thursday, but we think now it's too soon to do that.
Well, I'm out of town. Yeah.
We're basically starting fresh at this point.
Are we? Sounds next week, love.
Thanks.
And and I should know that Commissioner Maite is in the meeting as well, mayor.
Just to make, ah, hello, commissioner. Thank you. Um. Well, it's next week. I got Tuesday and Wednesday available, Thursday not. Friday. That's the call.
We have a meeting Tuesday, the twenty third, Jeff.
You mean the thirtieth?
Uh, so that.
Oh, the twenty third.
You you're referring to the. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that's confirmed yet, but.
Oh.
But you do.
Probably. And I see that Commissioner Maite has his hand raised.
Uh, yeah, Chris. He can't hear you.
Is your, is your microphone?
Unmuted. I think we have a muted on our end. Hmm.
I don't believe so. Um.
What's wrong with somebody else?
You did so like muted. It's here.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Um, I just wanted to say that next week, I am out of town Wednesday through Sunday. Uh, but I am available on Tuesday. I heard you mention next week.
I can't do Monday, but I, we can have another councillor fill in for me on Monday.
What's that?
About two to nine.
Yeah. We could, we could ship that out and give you guys Tuesday for the uh, for the interviews.
Yeah.
The challenge there would be the next pool task force meeting is on December first. And so that would really run up against it.
Couldn't go earlier in the day?
If that's, if that's an option, that would be good.
Schedule the. Our interviews, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Okay.
Right.
Well, so what it's a Tuesday, the twenty third. That just shot for you. Just fine. Evening, yeah, up, six o'clock. I, what time I do want to?
I think generally six o'clock is is a pretty reasonable time.
Seven.
You have stuff, how many?
It's, and there was discussion about should it be broken into two nights or not?
Yeah.
Um. There was a back and forth about that. It sounded like we landed on, let's just get it done. And maybe, maybe the meet, you know, the interviews don't need to last forty.
How many of them are there?
There are seven.
Maybe we just don't talk very much and keep them all lined up and ready to. And then, no. Yeah, I just had it so. I guess. So. Uh, love you, boss. I deserve it. It's well deserved.
So just something to consider is, you know, these are members of our public. Some of them have to get up and work early in the morning. So, I mean. Those are late meetings. It's a late meeting.
Three hours.
Some of those will be at ten o'clock at night. I do think.
Isn't that good practice for the.
You know, we just have each interview take twenty minutes. That seems plenty long.
But even the parks that interviews for fifteen, twenty minutes and and then there was discussion after.
There's a pause in between, uh, people about there.
Can we do the interviews and then have our discussions on a second day or a different time?
Is that possible, Chris? Sorry.
I say let's, let's do Tuesday at six and then have another night that we. Talk, talk it all through. And you know how it is, sometimes it's so apparent that it's like, can we just wrap this up? And maybe it won't be, but maybe it will be. Yeah. Okay, perfect. Okay.
Whoever cheers it, just, you know.
Twenty third at six o'clock.
It could happen.
Now, let me just send, if I send a certain individual the message, he'll know that I can't do anything else. Hold on.
Oh, he's checking with boss.
So glad I'm not participating.
Next Tuesday.
Uh, I could.
Right.
First with the kids, Monday night. They really get.
Okay. Yeah.
They got the whole week off.
Huh? Kids. Twenty two, right? Yeah, okay. And then, do you guys need to schedule yours now?
Yeah.
You did. Okay, wow.
We did it.
There you go. We're accommodating over here. Well, we accomplished that meeting and that item on the agenda.
Chris.
All right, moving on under old business.
He's out there.
Oh, thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Uh, three sixty second Bell Street Extension Project Update.
Hey, come on up, uh, by Glocken Public Works Director, we'll, we'll give the staff report. Just want to preface it quickly by saying, um. You know, we sort of previewed this with the council when we talked about our legislative ass, um, and what the project costs are looking like with our. Our top priority transportation project with three sixty second and Bell Street. We wanted to talk a little bit about where we are at now at sixty percent design. And that cost estimate on the construction costs uh, in particular, but. Also kind of give you a strategy of how we continue to move forward as we progress into ninety percent design and ultimately going out to bid uh, early next year. Um, and we think we have a plan on on how we come up with the the funding uh, with this project right now and that some other options too, if needed. Um, then we'll continue to sort of. You know, look for opportunities, value engineering, crossing our fingers. Um, we expect not a lot's going to change between sixty and ninety, um, except for towards escalation. Um, but. Yeah, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike, kind of give you a more detailed um, review. And then also, you know, we haven't talked about this project holistically for a while where we're at. So if there's any questions about. Um, the alignment, where we're at in terms of right of way acquisition, you got the index item on the council agenda tonight about that, but. I'm happy to field those questions too with Mike here tonight.
Um, yeah, uh, you know, in the staff report, you can see that the uh. Thirty percent design estimate that we received in April, it's about six point one six million. And the sixty percent design estimate, you know, the quantities were pinned down, the alignment was finalized. Uh, the right of way requirements were finalized. And that came in about uh. About nine point two three eight million. So there is a gap there, but we have been able to, by reducing some of the costs, shifting some of the costs. In the project to other funds, you know, there's a water line and a sewer line. They're going in in Bell Street and uh, we can fund those of the respective utility funds. And then just some um. More refined cost estimates based on more accurate quantities at the sixty percent design stage. We think um. We can uh. Secure enough funds within the street fund. To pay for the gap in funding between the thirty percent and sixty percent design. And one thing that we've been really fortunate on is right of way acquisition. We had two million dollars budget for right of way acquisition. And right now it looks like the right of way is going to come in that right at a million or a little less. So that has made a big difference. That gave us some cushion as well. So between the um. Identified cost savings, paying for the utility improvements of the utility funds. And the savings in right of way and then the larger than anticipated uh. Uh. Beginning balance in the street fund and some contingency funds in the street fund, we believe we can uh. Fund it based on the sixty percent. Estimate and we'll have, the the engineers have said that they're pretty confident that the um. There shouldn't be a lot of change between the sixty and the ninety percent estimate because the quantities are are more refined. However, you know, in the bidding climate that we've all been experiencing lately. Uh, you know, once the project's out to bid, you know, that's the next big hurdle. You know, we can match up with the estimate before we bid, but um. You know, once it goes out on the market, we're we're going at a good time of the year, you know, February, March is a good time to get out to bid. For a project and contractors like to get their work lined up. So we'll hopefully, we'll have a competitive bidding environment. And um. The um. Estimate will be pretty close to the ninety percent of designers. But the uh, most bid will be close to the ninety percent designers.
So. So Tyler, when we did the ARPA reimbursement, was any of those funds for uh, our street fund? That the money was able to replenish? Because I know our street fund didn't do, like, our street funds better than we would have thought after a pandemic, but is it still depleted or is it stronger than we?
No, we are higher than uh, it's going to be available to both operations and capital. Um, in part, thanks to some. Global gas tax. Gas tax to the bidder, it's. Um, which was part of the calculation for the revenue loss. Um. I don't have that exact figure in front of us right now, but it's nowhere near. The hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars that I know we're talking about for the.
But ARPA funds, I know it was mentioned in the staff report, but we do believe ARPA does qualify for this for economic recovery and. Well, resiliency or what?
I, I think there's two different angles. I think the safest would be back to the recovery of lost revenue. We have about a half million dollars we identified that uh, through that calculation that we can transfer from our, but basically it's general government revenue that you can then use on transportation projects. The other angle is um. Is using it for the water sewer because it's an eligible expense. So if you did the sewer line, the water line in the project and stormwater, uh, stormwater.
Oh, with ARPA.
With ARPA, you could just directly fund.
And possibly infrastructure.
Yeah, the ARPA doesn't give, allow you to do transportation projects alone, but water, sewer, stormwater, you can. And stormwater is a pretty big um, expense on this project. That's one of the things that changed with the alignment is that big. Uh, yeah. You have drainage pond and, you know, culverts and stuff.
So then also, just real quick, just to say, this is my last question, just on the series. Is reimb, a reimbursing district for the the stormwater and wastewater and all that? So that would, that's basically the, how quickly we're, our rate pair, our rate fund is reimbursed is based on development of the area, right? The ability for those properties as they develop to pay back into the wastewater sewer.
Just like you authorized the last meeting, you'd set that up on the calculation and they would have to pay into that.
Yeah. Okay.
So, um, I'm, you're talking about using the ARPA to take care of some of these things on three sixty second. I understand we're going, but there's a big value in the wastewater treatment plan. Um, wastewater, stormwater, that kind of thing. Is there a limit in how much ARPA we can gather and use for both projects? Are we going to end up with competition for the INI stuff that's going on that we may not be able to finish up? If we use them in three sixty second, or is there no conflict?
Well, so the council, you know, already committed the, you know, one point two million of our ARPA funds um, at a previous meeting. You can, you can change that commitment. Uh, we haven't made the resolutions or anything yet. Of the one point two, that's still an open question of how you want to commit those funds. So if you want to commit that to wastewater, you know, for system improvement project or a future treatment plan on the water side. Yeah, uh, then there wouldn't be funds for the three sixty second. Is that what you're?
Yes, and and there was about three or four different alternatives. You talked about possibility of using urban renewal dollars. We'd have to include this particular piece of ground into that uh, district that would.
So, so half, half of, half of this project is in the urban renewal district and it's a.
But not all.
Land that is not all of it, right? Uh, so would have to, you know, run that calculation to make sure on a eleven million dollar project, we're not talking about, you know, it's not going to be half of that funded for urban renewal.
Probably not.
So I think.
We have another project that we're doing over here that we might have conflict with.
Yeah, and so I think, I think what we're trying to outline is there's some safety valves that we could pull, especially with urban renewal and then maybe even ARPA if we need it when this goes to construction. We think we, we have enough contingency in the water and wastewater funds, you know, and that will roll through in future, you know, rate models, but we think we have enough there. Uh, to be able to fund the utilities of the three sixty second project from those funds. And on top of that, we have enough capacity in the street fund. Uh, to 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 make up the rest of the gap. And then we've also been working with engineers and outside engineers too, to look at the cost estimate and the plans and see if there's anything that we could value engineer out of those plans. So that is where we stand today. We'll come back at ninety percent and and have a similar conversation if things have changed, but.
I'm laying in bed the other night and my eyes pop up in the middle of the night and I'm like. If that pedestrian sidewalk kind of goes in. and Bell Street three sixty second doesn't, I'm gonna lose it, like, lose it. Like, as far as our council priorities go, Bell Street three sixty second has always been like number one, and I just, you know, that's just me having this nightmare in the middle of the night, that I'm not going where to say, I'm just like, that's my nerves, right, is that we continue to kick the can down the road and allocate money towards that project and keep it alive, and now this something that's going to be transcendent for our community does not get that, because we never pulled the plug and we just kept giving life support. So, so give me, just, but, but this forming into a question, is, provide me some color on how important of a decision we made a couple of weeks ago on how it could potentially impact the future of this project.
So on, on the VISA loop, uh, tonight, the, I think the commitment you made, you'd already spent, how many should we put into that order? A couple hundred thousand?
Yeah, about nine hundred seventy thousand.
One total, it, once all the, the block grant funds are fully committed and, and used.
One point two five.
Yeah. And so those, those pro, those, that funding that, um, the fund, through the fund exchange program could have been used for three sixty second, right? Um, so there is, you know, you're, you're spending one point two million on the VISA loop tonight project.
That may never.
In contrast, this project is a, you know, right now, that's made out eleven point two million.
Yeah, so they're not apples now.
Right now, we're saying at this point in time, we can fund both, and, you know, committed to both, they're both priorities, this one's obviously the bigger priority is, we understand from council, um, and we have some other safety valves like our buy and urban renewal, if ninety percent comes in higher, you know, and, and we're having to have another conversation about the funds.
Yeah, I feel like the PacWest, and we don't even know what the PacWest, you know, the, that funding opportunity is going to bring, we've got the ARPA for the second tranche that we could tap, where, cause at this point, we're just nine hundred K short, right? You know, we don't have the ninety percent in yet, but at sixty percent, we're nine hundred thousand, and we've already identified about six hundred thousand of stuff that we could kind of cut off, that leaves us with three hundred thousand, which between the utility funds, the ARPA, second tranche, and the, um, urban renewal, not to mention, maybe the free money we get from PacWest, I don't feel like we have to start, you know, throwing away the other, or, you know, rechanging our, our priorities or, or making other decisions, I feel pretty.
And, and I don't mean to interrupt, just, it's just, I feel like we've been, we've, we've come back to this project like four or five times now, and it's grown.
This is, this is, but this is the nature.
No, 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 I, I understand, but, but, uh, knowing that that's the nature of the beast, but, but more than that, knowing that that's the nature of the beast, I want to make sure that we're being prudent with some of these decisions where we're allocating money early on, because while it's one point two million dollars compared to eleven, hell, we may need that one point two, that may be the one point two million dollars, you know, that stops this project, now, I'm not suggesting we go back and reverse a previous decision. I'm just more trying to highlight that we've got to get careful, you know, with the street fund, and I agree, we've got a renewal, we got ARPA, uh, we've got, um, you know, the requests going on through PacWest, and then we've got an infrastructure package that was assigned, you know, in a lot today, so, so there's a, and we're talking infrastructure, so there's a lot going on, I, I don't mean that totally go off on the alarm bells, but inflation's growing, the supply chain's a problem, this is a huge priority for us, where our community is only so big with so many financial resources, I, I just, I just want to be careful.
So what we're talking about is an estimating issue, right?
Yeah.
Quality of the estimates aren't coming in with the amount of contingency that's reflecting our reality, and that's the feedback we need to set up, is that as we contemplate future projects, we need better estimates given, you know, wherever had it granted.
What are we looking at for a start date on this? What are we looking at?
Last. That's a bid in February, March, I started April, May.
Well, I'm really, you know, going to be insisting that we do this recovery district thing, so, because all this, you know, whatever development's going to happen there should help be paid for all this, because.
But that's a long term, though, it's.
It's not for me, it's, because again, I, I ran on the development should pay for itself thing, and I get, everybody has a different opinion about how that all plays out, but this is a good example where, you know, if we're spending eleven million dollars of, you know, we're giving up a lot of other projects to, to make this happen, and that's okay, but let's be getting as much as possible reimbursed as it develops, and it is in the future, it's my group.
One thing we can agree on is that it's going to be more expensive than we think, oh, it's, there's no.
It'll be, it'll be more come April, that's why I asked when this was going to be ready.
Yeah.
And then, I, one of the questions I had when reading this was, um, why wait till February or March, can we go out to bid in January? Because we talked about this before, going out to bid in November, December, because a couple of years ago, we went out to bid for an intersection down here, and we had zero bidders, now we're in a, coming out of a pandemic when nobody working, like, or already.
And all communities are going to have money to push forward.
Yeah, I mean, like, we should have been going out yesterday for, and I did it, we're at sixty percent, I understand that thirty, sixty, when we did the fiber to the home project, this whole, I learned a lot about this, hey, the design is now at ten percent, or twenty five, thirty, and the numbers get refined more and more, and sometimes up and down, and and I get that we're at sixty, and there's going to be a ninety, and it's going to be a little bit different, but man, we really got to get this on the street today, not in March or February, because I don't want to have the same thing happen, and now we're two, two years out, this is a.
Can I?
Big issue last time.
Can I build on that? Uh, for staff, um, what's the option of putting it out for a, a final design build combo package as opposed to wait for the ninety and then go for the construction? Just to lock in prices, to Jeremy's point.
So, what, what would, so what's the, the next hurdle?
A lot of money into design, so it really wouldn't be a true design build thing. Uh, we're kind of committed to the design get built, you know, method right now, uh, and, and you know, you don't see a lot of road projects, just plain roads, like, there's no bridges, no tunnels, whatever, they go C and D C or design, they're, they're designed, usually they're straight designed to build projects.
Okay.
Especially one of this size, you know, this isn't something that lends itself to C and D C or design build, and, you know, like we said, we spend a lot of money on the design already.
What's the due date on the ninety percent?
Next month.
So what, in terms of going out to bid in January, what's, what's the gate?
Main hangups are the, we wouldn't have a wetland permit. Um, we still have to go through the city's land use process, we still need the conditional use and the flood slope hazard overlay review for this project, uh, you know, we completed the annexation last month. Uh, the right of way is not cleared, and I don't think the right of way will take very long, but, uh, you know, I think we're dealing with willing seller in, in most cases. So, um, yeah, the, the big thing is the regulatory, you get a land use approval, you need a, a approach permit from ODOT. So even if we can accelerate the design, we really couldn't, we'd go out to bid without the, it'd be unwise to go without the land use approval or without the, uh, uh, wetland, so, but I mean, it's unlikely that we, you know, everything we're doing will comply with the city's land use regulations.
Yeah.
And there really isn't, hasn't been a lot of public interest in this project, and the only, um, affected properties are the ones we're buying the right of way from. So I don't think there's a, a big danger of having like a, uh, negative decision.
So I guess one, maybe the core of the question is, is it, do the uncertainties of not having the full complete design and entitlements create too many uncertainties so that it drives bid prices up more than waiting for a full package to go out?
No, because, you know, they, they, we, we could have something in the contract documents that said, you know, the, you know, what, the wetland fill can't take place until the end of the work, which is going to happen regardless, that's when it goes out to bid, um, and having to go out to bid without the right of way clear, doesn't, it does make people, bidders nervous, because there's no, you know, something could hang that up and they might pad bid, if the right of way wasn't cleared by the time it was.
So could we push to get some of this stuff done in the next thirty days, and then, and then push to go out to bid, the expectation to go out to bid in January?
Yeah.
And then revisit if, if for some reason this stuff doesn't come back?
Yeah. The only risk we'd have would be, we probably wouldn't have, I know the planning commission calendar is pretty packed in the, uh, this month and December, and, you know, I know there's code of this stuff coming out in January, so I don't think there's a lot of risk, though, in going out to bid without the land use being finalized. Uh, I, we think we, we can probably get the right of way cleared before the end of the year or, or early in the year, and then it's really the ODOT permit and the wetland permit that would be, you know, that came down if we went out to bid in, uh, January.
And two of the things I heard, maybe there were three, are our own, our own codes and our own processes that we can, and can we put those in place now? Because all we're going to do is hurt ourselves if we don't do them, and it sounds like maybe there's a scheduling, but maybe we can rearrange the schedule.
I don't think.
For whoever's on the planning, scheduling contact, because what we're going to do is hurt our own community by not getting on there. So I think it would be wise for us to rearrange our own calendars to make sure that those are the highest priority and done.
I'd like to go out to bid in January.
Yeah, yeah, some of that is not going to be too flexible because of, you know, planning commission is a, our funnel right now, the constraint, uh, there are some time zone lines that need to be resolved or at least recognized, so, uh, the planning commission may be an issue.
Ask them to call a special meeting, you know, if we can, uh.
Carl, both you and I know, and Kathleen sat in, and we used to have a lot more planning commissions a month than we do now.
This is like, this is way more.
Timelines is what I'm thinking.
Why, I get that, I've been on plant question, I understand the timeline, but can we fit them in? All I'm asking is, is that we try.
And let's not forget, those folks are still zooming it, man.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, they, they can meet and get this thing taken care of, they, they have not met with the public in person in quite a few months.
Yeah, they can also make extra meetings too.
Mm-hmm.
No reason why they have to be.
Yeah.
Without some sort of publication, we can make two meetings a week or something.
Sure hope those candidates aren't listening right.
Maybe they should.
So I don't think the land use is the biggest hurdle, you know, it's, it's more of making sure we get the right of way, but.
Are those other permits in process? That's the question.
Yeah.
And they're moving as fast as they can?
We haven't submitted the, uh, wetland fill permit, but they've had a consultation with the Corps and DSL, and we don't anticipate a lot of, you know.
So are, are they moving as fast as they could possibly move at this point?
Well, I mean, you, once you turn it in to those agencies, you know, the Corps has no timeline for what fill removal permits, NIM says no timeline. There's the state, Division of State Lands is in a timeline.
When, when do we turn it in? The part we control?
Uh, I, I think it's going to go in, you know, early in December, the, the mitigation is going to be finalized. Um, and that's part of the land use review, with the land use review to, to the mitigation side, but that's all going to be part of this.
Okay, so, so the land use from, from a critical path perspective, land use review, then the permit goes in?
No, no, the permit would go in, the, the wetland filter permit could go in before the land use. And it will.
Okay, in December.
Yeah.
January. I think what we've heard here in council, I guess, to.
Move.
Move quickly, like, we've been talking about for a while, we're hoping to have things bind up this last summer, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's almost Christmas, it's, we, we were, we were thinking we were going to be breaking ground in September, and now we're hearing that there's public processes that we still need to get through, so let's just, to Jeremy's point, you know, I mean, let's not sit up here and complain a little bit, let's, let's get it done, you know, let's get it on the calendar, and let's, let's push it through.
Yeah, we can sit down with a consultant and say, you know, what's the earliest we can get this to set up with? With the risk of, you know, the ODOT permit, the, uh, wetland fill removal permit, and the land use.
I think. Look for everywhere the candidates.
That's the key, right, if you, if you need something from the council to move faster, please ask.
Yeah, one, one hang up too, is, you know, one of the properties we have to acquire, um, may have some, you know, we have to do a level two hazardous materials corridor assessment of one of the properties, and our attorney has recommended that we don't make a, uh, offer on the right of way until the, uh, hazards materials corridor service is completed and that issue is resolved. How much of a risk is that, though? We'll, we'll do a little risk evaluation, if we don't think it's a very big one, then.
Maybe that should be.
Mitigated amount of.
Yeah, yes, again.
That should be discussed in an exec session.
Yes. But if we need to jump into an exec session here in the next couple of meetings for the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, let us know.
Yeah.
Or if we need to have a special meeting, because.
Or a special meeting, I mean, that's where we are, I mean, that's where we are on this project. We're, I mean, we'll do what we need to do.
I think every little piece we get down for that chain, uh, the closer we get to maybe getting some of the money from the state or whatever coming down too, because we're more shovel ready in the timeframe we need.
We share this, that's urgency, we also share from the standpoint of, uh, but Mike leaving here soon, so we don't want anything lost in trans, translation, you know?
Yeah, we, our consultant, like, you know, you think there's a big difference between January or February or March? From now, what's what they think would be ideal time to have this project?
Jordan, one of the things I think would be good for the council, because now I've kind of lost the point on what's actually critical path, would be to, just like we did on wastewater, to understand what those items are, those big ticket items, what are the scheduling, and who's on point for them, so that we can get an update on that in future meetings. And then the concern, of course, isn't what's the best time to go out for bids for us, or I think it's the certainty of knowing we have it out for bid, and what the actual price tag is, is may actually be more important than the right time to hit the market. I think that's what, I think that's got everybody scared.
Oh, no, I think what scares me is that you're going to have a new public works director in January, so all these plans to kind of, you know, get all this stuff, I mean, that person's going to be, you know, totally new, and expectation that all this is going to just go flawless, and it's a little bit ambitious, I think, but that's probably scaring me a little bit more than anything else.
I mean, so, yeah.
Back to discussion of what, um, some of the options there, I agree on, you know, being able to do all these different options, you know, I said a few years ago, I know our urban renewal budget is, uh, it's one of the things I didn't like, the clean diamond things out there was, we got some big projects, one being the campus, and we don't want to forget that. The other, though, that came to mind was using the urban renewal for this particular, because it is in, but this huge chunk of it is, uh, a huge part of the urban renewal district, anything that does get built on there is a double whammy, they can pay the SDCs, but also that value of that land goes, we'll just say a thousand dollars a year in taxes to, I don't know, we'll just use numbers, ten thousand dollars a year, that goes right into that urban renewal, building that urban renewals reserve up quickly by just having one or two of the biggest commercial zones that we have, so in that, back to Kathleen's point or a bunch of others, we can backfill in this, uh, yeah, uh, quickly in that, and in having, you know, I know on the north side of it is more housing and things like this, there's, there's a lot of it that we put in place, so, uh, I think I'm not worried, concerned about being able to find that remainder, I do say, though, I am concerned about the idea of, um, paring it back, uh, that, what was it, six hundred thousand? Here's the six hundred twelve thousand value engineering, anytime I hear value engineering, I think it's a four letter word. Because all I've done in the past, in my history of work, is we just kind of get screwed later on, you know, you take something out, you didn't really want to take out. Now there, it doesn't go into a lot of details of some of the stuff we quote unquote don't need, was that?
So my entire life is value engineering.
But the, the point is, is are we going to take that out to, in five years from now, pay three times that amount? Because it's already been developed, or is that, and then also the cost is, you will know in twenty years from now, the cost of doing this is going to be ten times the amount, so, uh, that's why I worry about some of those things that are quote unquote value engineered out that, we, we maybe not want to do that, uh, so, there's my.
Maybe, that term is, yeah, I understand the, the problems with it, most of the items that have been identified have to either do about, uh, unit costs that we just sharpened the pencils on, or items that, um, at sixty percent are just, uh, over budgeted or overestimated, for example, like one was like, uh, uh, like traffic control and flaggers on a new street, you know, basically it was, we thought that, that the amount of time and money they put into that, it's a little bit more than what's necessary when there's just one intersection that needs to be dealt with, so.
I mean, why they're doing construction, or we're not putting up a light? When you say traffic control.
Traffic control, or, you, you need flaggers when we would build out the intersection at three sixty second.
Oh, I see, okay.
So these, yeah, value. Uh, it's really just, you know, as the design gets more refined, you have a better idea what these coins are, they were using like a ten percent for, um, mobilization, they were using ten percent for traffic control, where, you know, they, they were just treating it like it was any other project, and using just kind of a hand number for these estimates. And then once we say, well, you know, there's, there's no traffic control necessarily, because we're building, you know, we're not building on an existing street.
Right.
It's going through new ground. It's going through new ground, so traffic control budget went way bit down. Uh, the mobilization went back up a little bit. So you, yeah, there's, there's really nothing being eliminated from the project that would affect the utility of the project. We're still doing the street trees. We're still doing the sidewalk, uh, and all the stormwater, nothing's really changing.
Utilities are going in.
The entire road will not have, uh, only portions of water. Because all the project, all the parcels adjacent to the project. Uh, either have access to existing waters through utility lines, or they will as part of.
The commercial part will though.
The two large commercial properties at the west end already have access to sewer line and, um. A water line, and they would need to extend the water. There's already a water line that runs north, south, upward along.
Well, I'll legger this, but I know we talked about in council about, let's not try to rejig the road back up again because we forgot to put some pipelines in.
Yeah, happening. There's a, and that's our goal, too, is right now having to dig again. I think the route is. Tool development occurs and where those driveways may be and how they develop those parcels, there's gonna be.
Outside the commercial. Sure, but in the commercial.
Yeah, there's those pieces and then you just don't want to build this thinking, hey, now we're shovel ready to have someone come in and build and replenish our SDCs in our. In our urban renewal, but there's no sewer lines or water lines. You aren't really shovel ready in that project, so making sure that they are. Somewhere to be tied into.
All right, well, I'm hearing vast excitement. Um, I think that, uh, we're all ready to go with the recommendation. Except for maybe at the end, just right in a hurry, you know? That's great. Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Uh, moving forward, um, to our deck, uh, under new business declaration of public necessity, uh, Bell Street three sixty second.
Um, this is kind of the same issue. Council adopt the resolution that says in July. For all six parcels that we need right away from, uh, one parcel at the west and the super parcel. It turns out we needed a little bit more land, about thirty thousand feet more, for a, um, above ground stormwater basin. Originally, we designed through, uh, below ground, uh, large span of the pipes for stormwater. Uh, detention, but those didn't work given the grade of the road, so we went back to the, uh, above ground. Detention basin. That saves a little money, it saves about two hundred thousand dollars, but it did require more right of way to get it surveyed. And the legal description is written up, and now we're prepared. After we do this, we're prepared to make an offer to the property owner. And now that we have finalized the amount of right of way, that's the, that property, and that's shown in the exhibits of the company, the, uh, resolution.
All right, now, sir, discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty two.
Your second.
Second.
Motion by Council Exner, a second by Council Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, Jordan, report for the city manager.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, we have a couple vacancies on our standing at advisory board. Um, so I know we just had a conversation about interview scheduling, but, um, I think we, we had a interview panel probably six. Six months ago or so.
Yeah. It's Dawn.
Yeah, so we're looking for volunteers again. Uh, we're recruiting actively recruiting for a couple positions that, uh, I think closes next month. Um, we're not looking for Davis yet, just panelists, um, want to do the same, just confirming that. Council okay with?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was our panel. I only remember.
Oh, great. Okay, you guys give us that. You know, it's Carl, Rich.
No, no, it was Dawn, Dawn, Rich and myself.
Okay, great.
We've had some people move out of the city or out of the community.
Yeah. I mentioned this in my weekend update, we are responding to the emails. I think council has gotten another letter regarding the wastewater project, so. We'll be providing a response to that one as well. Um, speaking of wastewater, uh, you know, almost three inches of rain. Uh, through the pineapple express, uh, whatever you call it. I think every sewer system, uh, struggled with that in the state. Uh, on the west coast, um, our plant, uh, they were, were doing the best they could do down there. Sustaining for MDD coming in, uh, peaked at around six. I think there's some good news that we're seeing in the flow metering that the actual peak factor is less than what we've seen in similar storms by a pretty good magnitude. So that's a good sign that this collection system work is actually paying some dividends. But we think, uh, you know, we won't know until, uh, so we collected samples today and we won't know until they, they run back, but. Um, they were able to kind of manage things down there. Um, you know, I, I think the EQ basin got full for a while. The clarifiers were struggling a little bit, but, um, they were, they were keeping a hold on things, so we'll see, but, um. I, I think the exciting part of that is to see the flows.
The second one came online like right before this, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so are we put packaging up that little story together and communicating that in our. EPA and those guys, because I think that's a great sto- I mean, that's a story of progress.
Yeah, we've been sharing, um, you know, Rob kind of monitors these flow meters and, and kind of does an analysis in real time. Understanding that's not gonna be till March until we actually update the model and actually compare storm events and be able to run the, the model through to see the benefit. Um, but we are sharing that with the EQ. Um, we do have a meeting on, uh. Wednesday, uh, with, with EPA and the EQ, um, so. Uh, I'm sure that question might come up, uh, in that conversation, but, um, fingers crossed that, uh, you know, we're, we're operating okay there.
I like the mayor's idea of having that packaging that is a story for what we have now, and not to. Not to say other people aren't doing as great a job, but to use as an example, hey, other communities. This pineapple express or whatever you want to call this, this, these rain events that we're having right now are affecting all these other people as well. We're not the only ones. Sometimes I feel Sandy is singled out, you know, and you hear about other little communities, but. You really don't hear about them, and if they are truly being affected, which we hear all the time from our consultants, like, yeah, everyone's in the same boat. Using that as an example, too, is, you know, not to call them out, but to, as, as we, does that make sense? Part of our narrative, how we've progressed in the last year or two, right?
Yeah, I mean, raw sewage is going.
River.
Okay, yeah, no one listens to Portland, what happens in Portland, I mean, but I'm talking about some other.
Yeah, yes.
Whatever they want, and they're not gonna get.
Even the Klocken River has other discharges, you know, than Sandy. So, and, and then on, uh, on wastewater, I, uh, we did authorize, if the council remembers the parametrics contract, we had. Um, the base contract and then the council authorized up to, uh, not to exceed amount that was above that eight hundred, uh, something thousand, but. The council then, uh, we, we talked about the idea of, um, having them look at some of these other alternatives such as groundwater discharge. Uh, indirect discharge of groundwater or subsurface affluent, uh, disposal. Um, so we authorized sixty thousand, I think sixty one thousand dollars, uh, for them to complete the study. And depending on the results of that study, there could be more studies that come out of that, uh, but they are starting that work. Um, and, and looking at that alternative, of course, we'll bring back the results and work with the oversight committee on that. We have a workshop with them on Thursday, uh, or Wednesday.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah, um, on the temperature mitigation alternatives and, uh, Council Self-Consent and Exner are part of that, so. Uh, more going on there. And then finally, I also wanted to thank, uh, Council's Exner and Hope to send for participating on the, the panels. Uh, for the public books, the director, um, I'm doing finalist interviews, uh, this week and, uh, excited to, to meet them and, and learn more and. Yeah, as we, as we talked about tonight, there's a lot going on in, in public work, so a crucial position for us and a crucial transition, too, so. Uh, that's it for me tonight, thanks.
Thank you. And, Don.
Thanks. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the Vessel Loop and the lighting and the fact that we pulled some of the lighting out of. Out of, of Vessel Loop and having driven that in the dark a few times now, I, I think we need to. As a council, think about our lighting strategy as we move forward, because that lighting. You know, this time of the year, it's the better part of our day is in the dark with the lights on, and that defines our image and our style, and I think we need to give that a little thought. What do we want that approach to look like? Not saying we go back and reverse our decision right now on that contract, but as we. Let's start thinking progressively, what should we, what should we do there? And on that as well, I think it's time that there's, just make sure that we've got all our street lamps actually working. And I'll just note that on my drive down here, the one at the bottom of the hill in Mineak by the park is out and creates an, an extra. Lot of blackness. On mining. Yeah, so, uh, but I think it's good, good to just make sure everyone's looking up. Making sure that we keep that lit, and especially with the homeless problem, keep that area especially lit, so. Thanks, good discussion today. Thanks for hearing us out.
Yeah. Carl.
Thank you.
Well, I thought you were gonna bring up something that I was gonna bring up. Are you talking, have you talked to ODOT about the, uh, extra utilities on that? Same just, you're gonna talk about that in a few minutes?
I am, but it's not.
Okay.
It's not like it's earth shattering news, because I think, as we all know, I, I like to brag about it beforehand if it's good news. And I haven't been doing much bragging, so.
You're running for an office. So if you're gonna bring it up, I will. Real pleased with the results on the, uh, public works interviews. Um, there were some that I wasn't really happy with, but I think, uh. Got a good mix. I really was pleased with, uh. Or HR person. Angie, there it is, yeah. She's really worked hard to make that happen and work that well and put that together, so. I'm pleased that that was a good job, so look forward to hearing a result there. I've been receiving phone calls and emails about the art committee. When it's happening, where it's gonna happen, when do we want to put that on the docket for getting it going? I know that we talked about being way too busy. To add another one, but, uh, it really, it's been several months now, and I think that, uh, I would love to have councils. Advocacy for doing something about the beginning of the year, if we could find a way to get that put back up on the table. Uh, there's a number of projects, um, that really do need to be looked at, thought through. There's some things that are expiring that need to be taken care of, and I would like to be able to put together that committee to be able to handle that, so. Uh, I would, I have to talk to the mayor a little bit about getting that on to an agenda sometime, maybe in a workshop or something to put some sort of direction on their. Table as they move that forward, but I would love to be able to get that started sometime after the first year. Really, sorry to hear that, and, and I've got probably three really strong candidates that would love to jump in and apply for the job. So, hoping that will.
Join us.
It's out to a, the work session list, maybe try to get on for.
Yeah. Two are, one is not, but they're within the, the district, so. We said we could have some outside, some small number outside.
Thanks, Carl. Kathleen.
Um, I'll give an update from the library, folks. I think I said this at the last meeting, but in case I didn't, I, um, they, they. Review their strategic, um, plan that the library district has. And there, normally they would be in, in the process, starting to update the strategic plan, but because it's been almost two years of. Not really being able to implement it, they kind of decided to kind of push it out another two years. So they had a chance to kind of fulfill the, um, objectives that they had in their original plan. So they are gonna be doing that, and as I said before, I think they are looking at working pretty closely with, uh, our new Parks and Rec Director, um, Rochelle. Or considering aspects of the potential community center and how the library programs and all can kind of. Um, collaborate together for that, for those efforts, because there's a lot of overlap there, as we all know. The library itself, they had, um, almost two thousand kids at that trick or treat thing. They had two hundred people at, uh, two hundred teens. Um, middle schoolers and high schoolers at the trick or treat, uh, event in Minet Park that Carol Cohen, uh, organized. Their, um, checkouts are about, um. They're up, they're going up slowly, but they're still, uh, only probably about two thirds of what they were pre-pandemic. And their foot traffic within the library is, is about half, so they're hoping to kind of just continue to grow, grow back out of the pandemic. Um, I, I met with Rochelle just to kind of go over some of the different projects that are ongoing. The, the planning that we're doing with the aquatic center and the community center and the, um, parks and trails, um, master planning. Um, it's, she's got, you know, I just kind of gave her kind of an update on some of the status of those projects and. Um, she's got a great attitude, a lot of enthusiasm. I'm really excited to see where she takes it, because this is gonna be kind of her. You know, bailiwick to, um, hopefully really be working with us as a council closely and, um, really. In my opinion, really kind of, you know, leave quite a, a legacy, um, going forward for the future of our residents. So really look forward to looking at that. That's about all I have.
Thank you, Kathleen. Rich?
Yeah, just real quick, um, so tonight for the work session that we talked about, I'm sorry, uh, homeless task force stuff. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you, not only just for it, but also to Ernie, uh, our chief of police and then Jeff, I can break the officer. They've also contributed a lot and put in, uh, Jeff specifically has put in a lot of work, so I just really wanted to say thank you. And then I know it was probably discussed, but I wasn't here last week. I just wanted to say personally, uh, thank you to the chamber for putting on the trick or treat show. I took my kids down there, it was a great time and a great turnout and ran really nice, so I just wanted to personally thank you.
Um, let's see, Parks Board met last week, um, they looked at, uh, they're looking at two proposed developments at Jewelberry and Kelso. Hard to say if those will, will move to fruition, but right now they decided on a Fianlu, um, should those move forward. Uh, which is about all that they had there. I thought there was a couple of things I wanted to mention tonight, but. Um, thanks for your guys' feedback, um, during the work session, really appreciate that. Uh, was hoping that we'd have a good talk and knew, and knew we would, so that's fantastic. Um, that's all I got. Awesome. Uh, Jeremy?
Yeah, thanks for the, all the work you guys did in that, uh, the task force there, I appreciate it. Learned, always learn more every time. Uh, you guys are there in educating myself and the rest of us, so I hope we can find a great place for our community. Just wanted to get on the radar as I hear all the reports that we can't find snow plowers for our mountains because of a work shortage. But then it made me think every year since we've had the snowmageddon, which some of you might not have lived in the city at the time, but. Anyways, when we had, uh, three feet of snow and, uh, literally in our driveways, um, fourteen years ago. Um, and then we decided as a council, we can get some outside help from farmers and contractors that might help us remove that. Anyways, we've brought it up every couple of years to make sure our list is up to date in that, um, so not saying we're gonna have a big snowstorm, but. Be prepared, um, in that, um, and whatever types of materials we may need to order for that, we may want to do it now versus waiting another month or two. Uh, Les Schwab, I have to say, driving by Les Schwab, it's, uh, starting to.
Did they go through their facade?
They're starting. They've, they had the base ripped off for about a week where the rock was gonna go. They added some paint, the paint itself. Was life-changing, um, and some other pieces of it, so I know that game, I was pretty excited when hearing about it the first time. And it been excited for it to happen, uh, so it's in that process, uh, there. Uh, the street sweeping, I know I brought this up at the last council meeting, I know myself, I was out there pulling away from the drains and helping. That I noticed, I don't get on Facebook often, but, you know, the ones that did pop up is like. You know, the, I love it when community members are telling other community members, just go out there and rake it yourself and, you know, which is good. I mean, I went out there and. Actually, it was a lot of fun. It was really warm rain, right? You just go out there and you, people drive by and they slow down and get out of the way because they know that you're out there. Um, trying to help out, but we can all help out doing that. But on the other note, I do think we need to be, I don't know what the schedule's like today. I drove down to Barco and I saw a street sweeper going about twenty-five miles an hour. He wasn't sweeping, going in the other direction. Going, okay, where are you gonna go? Maybe it's gonna be down to Barco. I, I have no idea, but. It was at your house? Yeah, just his house, but it went down by the mayor's house.
Definitely my house twice.
No, need to combine my place.
I think there's somebody leaves Germany. I mean.
And I get that.
Empty and come back.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I get it. It just seems like there's more this year. I just come back to what my comment was the last time, you know, we do have great trees. And we're a tree city USA and those type of things, but in that, the city also needs to, if we're gonna have those policies, you've got to have something to help. With it. It seems like it's kind of gone later in the season, because we used to see it a lot more. Now, we have grown. I don't know what the contract is with our. Street sweeper, you know, it's not the same hours as it was hopefully fifteen years ago when we're a much smaller city. With less street trees, but, uh, I guess what question is, where are we at on that and when do we? uh, I guess what question is, where are we at on that? And when do we decide to expand that contract or, or, um, or are they having the labor shortage? That everyone else is right now because they're all going down to Panda Express and getting jobs at a hundred grand.
Do you have anything that's changed with our.
They're not selling clothes at least.
Yeah, it's, you know, they, they do it, um, the three business days closest to the middle of the month. So that's good to know that they're up there right now. And, you know, October and December is a busy time. We have other news for clients. So I'm glad to hear that they're out there now. Uh, you know, they were, when they're in October, the streets look great for a day and then we have a rainstorm. So it's just like, you know, when you rake the leaves at your home on the weekend and then look how it looks today. So it's, it's, you just can't get away from that. But no, that we don't have a fixed um, rate on the contract. It's a, it's a per hour cost. So as the city has grown and more miles of street are swept, the, um, uh, dollar amount of content has gone up. So, you know, it, it takes, you know, with the statistics, I think we put this in the monthly report. Takes a hundred and twenty hours of street sweeping to clean up all the leaves and that's what we pay for. You know, in July might take seventy. So, you know, it just varies by amount, how much stuff is on the streets to be picked up.
So anyway, I don't know what we need to address it, but it, it's, uh, out there. Well, this is my thing going in the next budget cycle. Is that where we're at a point to do? I don't know. Or contract, you say we only have three days a month.
They swear that's, that's when they're out here. You know, but, you know, in the leaf season, they might have three sweepers working in Sandy over those three days in July. Then I do the whole town with one machine.
Yeah, maybe it just feels like different this year, but anyways, just wanted to bring it up. I know there's a lot of rain that's also, um, affecting that, but uh, the lighting on highway twenty six, um, and then you brought up a good point because I was looking at the lighting, uh, twenty six, not necessarily out there, but the rest of our city. And so, and, and as you go in different areas through town going, what I heard last time is, well, it's really easy just to put up lights on these, on the electrical poles, then you will go down towards the other side where it's really dark and people are walking safety points. Yet there's the pole, but no lights on there. And so I guess if it's that easy to go do there, can we go ahead and start working on what it would cost to put it on the other parts of highway twenty six as well? That's already inside our city limits.
Pioneer.
Well, I'm taking even outside between the other couplet and, you know, down towards, uh, three sixty second. Yeah, where that's really dark. It's, yeah, I mean, as a runner, and I run, uh, um, but down, especially in those parts, I really don't, you know, it, it can be kind of kind of a, a dark place. So anyways, but I think it was a great observation.
Christmas present.
My, my point is not for me. I love it that we can joke and all be friends still.
How do you feel now?
I appreciate it. I think picked on. Um, and I can't even read my next writing. Um, oh, and then the art commission. Yeah, I had an email. I sent to, um, Carl, and, uh, you know, I think there's some new, maybe, I don't know, called new blood or new generational or that area that, um, that had wrote me because they knew I was on city council and I was able to share with uh, Jeff and Jordan, Carl, and, and, uh, I was excited because here's, you know, uh, maybe coming from a, a different generation perspective and, and trying to get some high school kids in a program involved in that. And so um, I think there's a lot of, could be some synergies in some different directions. And, and yeah, they do live inside our community, but working with high school students and those type of things for different ways, um, that they may not be in the city, in our communities as well as, as, uh, people that go to our high school. But anyways, uh, pretty, pretty positive there. So that's all.
Uh, yeah, thanks. One, so on the lighting issue, you know, we, we're talking value engineering and all these things. And I, I do think, um, it's a balance. We got to be good stewards of taxpayer money, but we got to start thinking bigger as a community. What, you know, we, we do invest a lot in the sandy style and different things and where we are at the base of our hood and people traveling through it. We, we just continue to have so much opportunity here. If we just would think a little bit bigger and maybe invest in ourselves a little bit more. Uh, so I do like hearing those things and us thinking that way. Just wanted to thank, uh, two of you and staff on the homelessness task force. Thank you guys for all the work that you put in there. I think the recommendations tonight were outstanding. I hope some of the talk back and forth isn't discouraging at all. It's I think a lot of us just haven't had the time or the opportunity to think through some of the things that you guys have. So thank you for that. Um, I, I mentioned the ODOT thing, you know, I mentioned earlier that I woke up in the middle of the night. Well, it's because I talked to Ryan that day and I didn't get anywhere, you know? Uh, that's why I was upset. Uh, so you know, he reminded me of the million dollars from last year. I reminded him that in today's dollars, it's about four hundred thousand dollars, not really that extreme, but yeah, I mean, you know, it's not as much as it once was in today's dollar. So we agreed to keep talking. He doesn't have the budgetary allocation, uh, but you know, his budget just grew today as well. Uh, granted, they're getting a billion dollars and about five hundred thousands going towards the I five project, but uh, I think there's still some opportunity, but I can't report today that it's super positive and it's going in a good direction. But, uh, I, we do have a strong relationship and we can continue to try. Uh, he did remind me of the, uh, the lights through town and all that. And I reminded him of the side streets. So, so we'll, 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 we'll see where it all, where it all goes. Uh, C four went to that housing, it's just housing, housing, housing right now. We're just not getting a mu- a lot that is really, uh, being talked that impacts our community directly. Um, we are, we will get some, uh, possible housing dollars as allocated our way as a result of them being less more with metro money from that housing package that passed, you know? And so, you know, that is, uh, workforce type housing staff that we'll have to really think strategically about. Um, planning, the planning, uh, is planning still meeting in Zoom? So our planning commission is still meeting in Zoom. Now, a lot of our committees still, uh, meet in Zoom and I'd, uh, you know, kind of had asked maybe for a consideration to open uh, out of Zoom. They're still meeting in Zoom. Um, and so I just want to use this opportunity to say that I think that our planning commission should be meeting like we are. Um, I think that they should be meeting in a hybrid fashion, uh, for members of our community, be able to show up and testify. Uh, I remember we were going through a very controversial housing, um, development, um, deal when COVID first hit. And there were comments said by some people on this council now that, well, we can't pack the room now, right? We can't pack the room now that we have to do a virtual meeting and that's that's important. You know, there's a pandemic that was going on, um, which is why we had to do virtual and we tried to accommodate in every way. And we're still doing a hybrid of that. But anyone who was part of the swimming pool decision and anyone who's been part of some of these, you know, harder decisions, understand the importance of hearing from our community and the opportunity for our community to engage and, and those types of things. And the vaccine's been out for a long time. We're opening more and more and more. Uh, I think that our, and so that's as far as I'm going to go with it, but I do believe that our planning commission does need to start eating in a, in, in person format. And let's be accommodating, just like we are at our counselors and staff. People need to do it virtually. I'm not, I'm not looking to be a jerk about it. But I would like to see more participation with our public.
The aquatics committee is meeting in person. So.
Yeah.
There are other committees out there.
Yeah, sending it in economic development in person or as well. So I'd love to see some in-person meetings and specifically in planning.
Um, with that, uh, on, on COVID kind of related, the tree lighting, there is going to be an in-person um, element to that. I would like to see that hit our marketing because in the marketing right now, it's still sold as if the event is taking place like it did a year ago. Um, there is going to be an in-person element. Then of course, we're also going to have the drive-through option stuff for people who want to, uh, participate in that fashion. Uh, holiday, but that reminds me holidays and Sandy's a special time. We got the Kiwanis that are doing their, um, their program this year. Uh, please get involved in that, uh, and, and all those kinds of activities. And with that, I think that's the, to make it to the end of my report. I did. All right. Thank you, everybody. Great meeting tonight. Appreciate it.